Good morning, everybody, and welcome to today's meeting of Service 20 Minute Neighbourhood Practice Network. It's good to see everybody where we're seeing it feels like it's been a while since we've done an event on Zoom because we've been doing some live events which have been exciting and well attended. But we're maintaining our national events online because we realize that actually provides much greater access to a much wider community and the attendance this morning indicates that really widespread of interest in the practice of what a 20 minute neighbourhood is going to look like. And so welcome to today, for those that don't know me, I'm Yulich and the Chief Executive of Service Scotland's Regeneration Forum. Most of you will know me because you've been, you've joined the network for some time and we've covered quite a lot of ground in the past year since our first meeting. Last September, I think was the when we had the first meeting and we looked at all ranges of approaches to 20 minute neighbourhoods and we've all acknowledged it's a developing policy area, it's a developing agenda. And we have covered a lot of intricacies around, around its potential and the qualitative nature and the experiential nature of what a 20 minute neighbourhood is. And I suppose we particularly explored that in our last session with Living Streets Research on our plan, which I just checked this morning, I don't think it's been published yet. And but we also looked at what it kind of means for rural Scotland. And we had a separate section on what it could mean for rural Scotland and the challenges around that from what looks like quite an urban concept, but I think Nick Wright kind of began looking at what it means for networks of settlements in Scotland in our last session. The, it remains a strong policy agenda, we will see it in MPF four, but we know it's much wider than a planning issue. And the conversations that we've had over the past few meetings has really revealed it's, it's not just a planning issue, it's a whole series of various parts of local and national government decision making that will determine how successful 20 minute neighbourhoods are or how successful the, the rolling out of the policy is. And some of the challenges may be not just around creating new settlements or adding extensive sites onto our existing settlements, but it's actually how we retrofit the, the policy around their existing settlements. And on our existing settlements and data, we have some really sort of interesting approaches in our speakers this morning. So first up this morning, we have Paul McCarron, Lucy Stiles from Aberdeenshire Council, which again, we think is going to be really interesting because we know that they're doing some, and we might think is cutting edge or forefront work on how the policy is delivered in an area which is, is not a city, but is certainly a series of sizable towns. And then we have John Olsen from the University of Glasgow looking at work that he has done with data, which we think tells a story that some people might find quite surprising. And also the work of that, the work and data sets that he's doing will be, I think possibly be foundational for a lot of continuing research by various and other local authorities and by government. And last of all, we have Flora Ogilvy from Transport Scotland and looking at, looking for our help really in how we push the reduction in car use. And which is maybe not something for rural Scotland because I think we've identified that cars are necessary to live in rural Scotland, but in our cities, car use, the reduction in car use is possible. And but it needs a lot of people to support that agenda and so Flora is going to talk about that. And I suppose having Transport Scotland speak today is a bit of a virtuous circle because our first event, Ram Ball spoke about their research, which was commissioned by, by Transport Scotland on the topic of 20 minute neighbourhoods. So we are still in the position of where I suppose interrogating what a 20 minute neighbourhood means, how we understand it both through data and through experience and qualitative data. And the network will continue to explore that. But what I will do now is I will hand over to our first two speakers from Aberdeenshire Council and they're going to be talking from concept to operation, 20 minute neighbourhoods and rural Aberdeenshire. So over to you, Paul.
Thanks, Ian. Good morning, everyone. My name's Paul McCary. I am the, the head of planning and economy for Aberdeenshire Council. And I've been in post for around two and a half years now. And I have my colleague Lucy Stiles with me today. I'm going to give you a kind of high level introduction to, to what we're doing in Aberdeenshire and some of the, the background thinking. And Lucy's going to give you the, the real detail, to be honest, about our thinking. I'm really lucky as a chief officer within an organisation, I have a diverse area of services under me, but also have a really exceptional team, really high skilled, enthusiastic and people from a variety of backgrounds, which enables us to, to look at 20 minute neighbourhoods and the concept of, of local living a wee bit differently and really rise to the challenge of, of how you deliver this in, in a rural authority such as Aberdeenshire. So to set the context, we are, I think, the third largest authority in terms of land area in, in the country. And we have a population of around 270,000. And we have 17 academies, Richard High School, so academy towns in Aberdeenshire. And I think we have over 100 primary schools. And in addition to that, we have a whole heap of challenges as to how do we create sustainable communities? How do we continue to deliver high quality services? But set against a backdrop of reducing budgets, we're a local authority, we recognise that the pandemic has had a profound effect on our communities, but in addition to to all the duties that we carried out as an authority, prior to the pandemic, we have new duties post pandemic and we have communities who are in significant need. And so how do we continue to, to support those communities? How do we continue to, to transition to sustainable service delivery? But equally, how do we, as an authority, how do we move towards net zero? These are all some of the, the high level strategic challenges that we, we face. When I kind of started thinking about that, you can imagine I had quite a few sleepless nights thinking, how do we deliver this? How do, how do we reposition our service? To, to rise to this challenge, to meet the, the challenge of National Planning Framework four, how do we start to build upon the successful regeneration strategy? How do we, more importantly, how do we support our communities? How do we provide equal opportunity across Aberdeenshire for everybody? And the idea of the academy town started to pop into my head, what are the, what are the areas of Aberdeenshire that are going to have the most significant change over the next five, 10 years? How do you start to plan away from, how do you move away from that five year local development plan cycle? Even moving away from a 10 year local development plan cycle and start thinking about the long term, thinking about the legacy that we're going to leave behind. What, what, what is it that we want to achieve? That's not only going to sustain the current generation, but provide that, that opportunity, that platform to launch for the next generation. And so we start thinking about legacies and we start thinking about that long term ambition. 17 academy towns in Aberdeenshire, 17 nodes that are going to be the, the hubs for growth, employment, education, development, employment. It's there, you know, and so we started to think about the 20 minute buffers, 10 minute walking buffers, 10 minute cycle buffer, starting to map on some of the routes, the, the active travel routes, starting to think about what do people need? We found some really interesting stats along the way, such as at any given point, at any given location in Aberdeenshire, you're only 20 minutes away from a swimming pool. You might be 40 or 50 minutes away from a health centre, but you're only 20 minutes away from a, a swimming pool. And so it has been quite an interesting journey that we've been on to date. And Lucy is going to give you the detail behind it, but I think it's recognising from, from my perspective as the, the head of planning and economy, it's not just about planning, as you rightly, rightly touched upon. It's actually about how do you transition a whole authority and, and communities to, to, to a more sustainable way of working and living? How do we brand our, our places as not just places to, to visit, but equally places to live and work in? So the, the, these are some of the challenges that we've been looking at, but I think bringing it all the way back to, to the, the, the concept of 20 minute neighbourhood. It's recognising that if we take that place based approach, if you look at our academy towns as the most, the, the hubs for, for development, investment and growth. Then we start to create the, the notion that we can move to much more sustainable ways of living, we can create places that are going to sustain our communities. But more importantly, for those more outlined rural communities, they have the connections into those hubs, which means that they can, they can start to, to relax about the future, but also know we can sustain those more rural locations, those more rural towns. But at the same time, we start to look at how we deliver our services, we start to look at place based budget and we start to align our investment plans for the future. And in doing so, we start to create the economies of scale, the resource capacity that's needed to transition organisation to build support communities. But equally, and more importantly, to start to, to provide that transition to net zero, not just for us as an organisation, but also our communities too. And so that's by way of introduction, that's some of the, the thinking that's gone on in my head and, and Lucy smiling because she's probably just realised that the same brain dump that I give Lucy, I've just given to you all. But I think the important thing is Lucy's picked this up, just made sense of it. And then she's, she's going to explain a wee bit about who she's leading the work that we're doing on, and, and Aberdeen's run establishment of rural 20 minute communities. And I'm going to pass you over to Lucy now, but I just want to say thanks in advance, Ian, for giving us the opportunity to speak today. But equally to everyone who's, who's tuned in and listening to and viewing our presentation and we're more than happy to answer any questions at the end. Thanks, Lucy. On to you.
Brilliant. Thanks very much, Paul. And so thank you, Paul, for setting the scene and giving those introductions. And yeah, no, we are really grateful for the chance to have a chat today. And I hope that there's something here that's helpful or interesting to everyone who's come along and we don't have all the answers, I'm sorry. But we're working on it and hopefully some of the, what I can do today is set some of the context about 20 minute neighbourhoods, local living or local communities. And the practicalities of it all framed within Aberdeen shared and hopefully I can share some of the considerations and opportunities that might be more applicable widely than Aberdeen share. I'm sure, well, I know that many of you are working on this already and experiencing these things. And, and perhaps you can see a different way of doing things or if something you like and we can have that discussion at the end. I'm also hoping to weave in some of the key points that I teased out when I did, I had the opportunity to do a masters at Dundee University through work. And, and I used the dissertation piece to actually try and really look at this in some detail. So I did a bit about how to retrofit the, or how we might be able to retrofit the 20 minute neighbourhood in Aberdeenshire. So some of those lessons, I'm hoping we're going to embed in an Aberdeenshire approach and, and share with you today. And then I think we'll have a little bit on the data that we're looking at and how that's informing our baseline. And I hopefully that'll tie in with what Jonathan's going to speak about after us. And finally, if we've got some time, I mean, although we're all waiting for the shape of 20 minute neighbourhoods or local living, wherever it's going to be, come through MPF, it's fair to say that life carries on regardless. So we're having to make things happen in the interim. So if we've got time, we'll have a wee look at some of the approaches we're applying and work we're doing in Peterhead and how we're trying to keep that place and 20 minute neighbourhood lens on it. So we all know the 20 minute neighbourhood's coming. And, and it's woven through so much policy and things we're seeing coming through and it's, it's going to, we expect it to be embedded within the planning system through as a key driver in the National Planning Act. And I think we're still anticipating that to come out later this year. And you know, in planning circles, the MPF is quite a big deal because it does fix the direction of national planning policy. I've pulled out this quote because I think it's as, as, as we've already said, it kind of recognises this role that local government has, that's really important, but it also starts to lead to the fact that it is about more than planning policy and spatial planning. And also what I like about this one is about the idea of ambition. So we might not be there yet, but you know, we can transition to becoming ambitious about our places. And so I think it's fair to say that there's definitely a direction of policy and emerging shape of things to come, but there is some clarity still needed on how we implement it, how we measure it, what even is the definition of it, or even if the actual 20 minute neighbourhood terminology is even right. And don't worry, I'm not expecting everyone to sit and read this. And but it's just to illustrate that, you know, that I think there's, there's history here, it's not new. We've had garden cities, we've got walkable cities and new urbanism. So it's not a new concept, the 20 minute neighbourhoods. So, and, and, and I think that's good news because there's much of the idea, the concept already adopted within policy and practice and how we go about things and we do see good places and good things happening. And I think it's always good to remember, remind ourselves that underpinning all these series has have gone on since Patrick Geddis is about, it's about addressing inequality and health outcomes, tackling climate change or net zero and improving social cohesion. And that's probably got an even more important role now thinking. Post pandemic, I don't think we are post pandemic, but you know, as we come to the end of the pandemic, hopefully. So as other, others have said, you know, that combination of experience of the pandemic and the escalating climate crisis really have made the 20 minute neighbourhood cut through. And maybe a way that other things haven't, you know, it's reinvigorated demand for services locally, shops and things. It's also come at a time where we're seeing some real improvements in digital connectivity and also new ways of service delivery. So I'm thinking in terms of healthcare, we've got some initiatives like the virtual wards here in Aberdeenshire, online appointments, how you might access fitness, but also learning. I did most of my, my masters part time online and, and that didn't disadvantage me. In fact, it was a real advantage for me. And you know, it's maybe altered how we start to think about services are provided across Scotland, but also Aberdeen sharing. And I think there's something Instagrammable about the term, which I think is quite useful that because it's cut through. And so we've got all these images of, you know, the bike super highways in Paris, we've got that very recognisable wheel from Melbourne and I just love the term super blocks. It sounds like it means business. And you know, it really has cut through. I did a Google search and you know, you turn up something and the more than 85 million hits for the term. And I don't know if this provides context, but that is less than Boris Johnson and more than Ishi Sunak. And these are some of the places that have sort of more recently grabbed the headlines on the 20 minute neighbourhood. And again, I'm not expecting you to read this. But what's really interesting to me is that there's no one size fits all approach. They've all got a solution that suits them, their context, their culture, their scale, you know, it's 15 minutes here, it's 20 minutes there. It's about the super blocks in, in Barcelona, it's about small distances in Freiburg. But there are some similarities that these places have, you know, they're cities, they have, some of them have a clear brands and identity. They've got boundaries, catchments that can be sort of clearly defined. They might have a figurehead or a type of governance that leads, can lead it. And they all do have that intensity and density of population. Freiburg's the smallest there. And in Scotland terms, that's Aberdeen plus Peterhead plus Aford. And, and that's the thing, isn't it? And I know Nick's spoken about this, Nick Wright, it is a, it's a countrywide policy. And Scotland is, you know, predominantly a rural, a rural place. And this is the Scottish Government Urban Rural Classification. And, and it sort of tells us here that 71% of Scotland's population are classified living in urban areas, which accounts for only 2% of the land surface. But, but although that's all true, it's clear that this diagram doesn't tell us what I suppose we expect and understand about the richness of Scotland, those webs of connections and interconnections and interdependencies between the many types of settlement that we have in Scotland. And we know that no two places are the same. And there's a really great paper called Putting Towns on the Policy Map, Understanding Scotland Places, which I've, I've got a link to at the end of this. And which actually sort of asserts that Scotland's a nation's a towns. And that actually, you know, of Scotland's 479 towns, by their measure, more than half of them, they're more, they're more than pop home to more than half the population. So towns and rural places and settlements are really, really important to Scotland and Aberdeenshire. So zooming into Aberdeenshire, this is Aberdeenshire here, we're kind of at the nose of Scotland, we've got borders with five local authorities. It's quite a large area of our, our western regions in the, in the Cairngorms National Park, bounded by the North Sea. And we split ourselves into six administrative areas again, and each got its own identity, characteristics, special landscape character, topography, voices and relationships. And I can tell you, confirm, it's a great place to work and live. And also that there's an awful lot more to it and oil. I think sometimes we get forgotten about all what happens in Aberdeenshire because of the oil industry. So to set the scene a bit more within our boundaries, we've got northern fishing towns, some of which are identified as regen areas, we've got historic bodas, prosperous and popular commuter settlements. We've got market towns with a real rich agricultural heritage, planned estate villages. And we've got those wee shortbreaded rural remote villages tucked in the Cairngorms National Park. And each of those act as their own sort of unique blend of residential, social, economic employment and tourism hubs. And by our LDP, we've got 179 settlements. And by the measure used in Understanding Scotland Places website, another great tool, there's 38 towns. And that means we've got the second highest by that measure, the second highest number in towns in Scotland, second to fifth. As Paul said, we've got about 270,000 people and roughly 5% of Scotland's population. And our density is about 41 people per square kilometre, which I can't quite visualise, but I can say quite confidently is quite low in terms of density. And our predominant house type unsurprisingly is low density. It's, you know, it tends toward low density detached houses, you know, you can understand in a rural setting. And with so many settlements and other rural areas, the firm tunes, the parishes and so on, spread over such a large and rangy rural geography, there's such a significant diverse and widespread infrastructure and service delivery network to maintain and manage and deliver on as Paul outlined. And this is where it gets interesting. It was kind of this idea of urban and rural. And, and this was a quote from someone I spoke to in my dissertation, sort of outlining that some places can feel quite, are quite small and feel quite urban. But others will feel very rural and be affected by rural issues, but be considered urban because of their size. And this bloodiness of urban and rural qualities, you know, from small to medium and large places is what we see in expedience day to day in Aberdeenshire. And I think it affects how, what the notions are of what a 20 minute neighbourhood is, who, what it might do, who it might belong to, how big it is and people who feel they belong to it. And what is understood by local and accessible is going to be very different from a resident living somewhere like Strathdon, a very small village in the upper dawn village in Cairngorms National Park. From someone living in established commuter town like Bank Creek or West Hill, let alone somebody sitting in Glasgow. So I suppose to that point, that's where we sort of think 20 minute neighbourhood, is it, is it the right term? Neighbourhood doesn't feel right. And we've got to think again, this is just a couple of contrasts about how, how this applies in all our different places. I've got a little extract there from the local development plan of CLAT, which is a tiny little place, but you know what, it's active, it's got a school, it's got a community space that's well used. It's got a rich heritage and it's got one of my favourite, most favourite Aberdeenshire names. And you know, the 20 minute neighbourhood is important here, but how it works and what it looks inward for and what it looks out for for, it's going to be very different to somewhere else. And then we've got new places and you know, how does that work? So we've got Chapelton of, of Elstic in the south sort of strategic growth area of Aberdeenshire and its master plan has become a complete new settlement with schools, with those wonderful facilities like, you know, shopping and healthcare and so on. But that's going to happen in time. And even though we've got a very proactive delivery and developer there who are going ahead with some of those facilities, but at the moment, for example, the children do go to school elsewhere. And at some point, they'll go to, there'll be a school at Elstic and that's going to change those patterns and interconnections between neighbouring settlements as that place grows up and what role it has in the wider context. And this is words from the Improvement Service because they said them much better than me. And, and it's just about those, that balance of characteristics and needs and what, what we do as a local authority. And the unintended consequences that happen in other areas, you know, whether they're positive or negative. And I guess underlying all that is the fact that you know, we've got to understand that no two places are the same. And I guess by acknowledging that, we also acknowledge that the 20, a successful 20 minute neighbourhood approach has to have the flexibility to accommodate creativity, judgment and place specific responses that are developed in conjunction with our local communities. So there's a couple of things we've been thinking about a lot in terms of operationalisation, I'll, I'll go on to, there's a lot more than this, but I thought I'd just show a couple of examples. And the first one's about proximity and accessibility. And this is an image that we did after taking after one that Dr Y Yang, a former RTPI president, and we've, she did it in a very urban way, we squilled it down to more rubble rural in suburban context, nearly invented a new word there. And, and we've developed it to reflect some of the brilliant data from people that pass for all. And it's sort of telling us that people are willing to travel different distances for different things. So you know, a bus stop is ideally closer to you because you have to, you buy in the time for getting there, waiting for the bus and then on the bus. Whereas actually you go a bit further to the GP perhaps. And again, I think this changes again when it's applied really for firstly, because I think, you know, speaking to people in the service, thinking about this dissertation, they've sort of talked about that kind of idea of actually, I don't need to leave the house today, but I will go into the village for X, Y and Z later in the week, or I must go to Aberdeen or and it's not about daily needs, it's, it's quite a different sort of, sort of thing. And, and I suppose it kind of ties in with this about, about expectation of levels of service. And, and some of the, the research that we did and things we've looked at is that if you live in a bigger place or you're visiting a bigger place or you use a bigger place, you maybe expect different facilities and a different level of facilities from a smaller one. And, and that all makes sense. So if in a hospital, for example, in a healthcare sort of setting, you might expect a minor injuries unit or a cottage hospital somewhere like Peterhead. And a smaller place, you might just expect to have that GP practice, but maybe it's got embedded allied health professionals. But when you're in a small place, actually, you're happy that there's a visiting GP that comes to a shared community space or there's transport access to take you there. So we've got to kind of think about this and how this all works and bring that into what we're thinking. And one of the other key themes that we're having to think about a lot is connection and how that works. So you know, so much about the delivery of this is about improving connections, whether physical, public transport and active travel. And obviously you had one, one, one comment along the lines of, you know, if you live five miles out of a town, is there a community transport scheme that you can access that will take you into that place? Or is there a bus that's running? Or is there a cycle that goes, goes right past your house that can zip you into your, into your local town? And I suppose that takes us back to that bus stop point. If you're in Aberdeenshire, that bus stop changes again because quite possibly you're going to have to consider another means of transport to get to the bus stuff in the first place. Whether it's a car share or some sort of responsive transport, local transport thing or an e-bike or, or maybe it's one of these sort of low level paths that takes you to a neighbouring settlement that's better positioned than you are for transport. And I guess that notion of connection is much broader than just transport. It's about blended service delivery as well. It's about digital connection. It's, it's a lot about paths and spurs and, and local, local level paths. And it's also about doing these things and providing the infrastructure to help move behaviour change as well because in Aberdeen share, we've got higher, quite high car ownership, which is understandable to go from the village I'm in at the moment on a bus to Aberdeen would probably take me about an hour and a half. If I have to drive, it'll take me 45 minutes. So, so it's a, you know, it's not much of a decision, but the, the, the problem with that then is is that actually so many people end up having, there's the few poverty bit and there's also the, the car ownership that people having to own cars to be able to do their work. So, so we need to work on that as well. And as Paul sort of already alluded to, we need to think about how we apply this practically. And we sort of think there's three different levels that maybe work in Aberdeenshire at different scale. And the first one is Paul really well sort of described as this idea of the hub. So, or sometimes referred to as a spoke, a hub and spoke or a field of centre or strategic settlement. And it's very much, I think, what the, the Improvement Service looked at when they were doing their argyle work. So you've got this central place that maybe does those, those sort of main functions and acts as a 20 minute hub. And can all the hinterland roundabout can, can use it. And then there's the idea of the linked places, which I think Nick's talked about previously. And architecture and design Scotland sort of do, they've done a bit of work on it, idea of a network of small distant places. So where you have a group of medium or small neighbouring settlements, each with its own unique offer. And, and I think in some ways, maybe that's how places in Scotland sometimes already work. One has the big copy, one has the good restaurant, one has the school. But again, it's about those links and connections between them. And then the last one, which I sort of leave for, for real interest, because I think this is so, so interesting. And is the smart clacking idea that's been pushed by, or, or work's been done on it by Rural Housing Scotland. So the idea that you could have a very, a very rural response, which is around new housing and at a very small scale with a particular focus on meeting affordable rural housing need. You know, in, in rural areas by taking former settings or dilapidated buildings back into use as a type of old housing, potentially with co-working and networking spaces and sort of shared food growing and, and resources and energy generation. And there's something very appealing about that and something again that I can imagine working in, in certain parts of Aberdeenshire because it really feels rooted in, in a, in a tradition that we've already got. So back to Aberdeenshire again. It's, it's for us at the moment, it's about focusing in on those 17 academy towns and seeing how they work because in some ways they already work as our kind of proxy 20 minute neighbourhood hubs. We've got schools there that do early years, primary, secondary, potentially some adult learning as well as after school care. We've probably got local democracy there in terms of, we'll have a council representation, we probably have some services, roads depots and stuff. And in terms of local democracy, we probably have quite well established community councils or, and active anchor community organisations and transport and services and things like that. But I've just got these sort of facts and figures in here as a reminder to me to say that sort of National Record to Scotland work on the idea of a settlement being over 500. And the rest, the sort of rural remainder, we've got a lot of the rural remainder in Aberdeenshire, these places that are under 500. But they, they've still got a key role to play and there's still places in their, their own rights. And I guess there's a number of approaches that we're trying to thread through the work that we're doing at the moment. And I don't think I'm, I'm, I'm telling anything new to anyone here, but we're really trying to embed this as how we take this stuff forward. And the first ones about the importance of people in the community at the heart of things. And we know that that can be quite difficult and sometimes local authorities and, and, and other key agencies maybe make it hard. And I speak for, for everyone, I suppose, but it can be hard because there's a lot of ineffective engagement. Sometimes there's a lot of engagement. And there can be a really cluttered policy landscape. So we need to, we know we need to improve those things. So we really need to get the community in at the heart and we need a proper two way dialogue. And we need to work really collaboratively and we know we can do it. We've got some really good examples, things like the Huntley Room to Thrive Strategy, which again, I've linked to at the end, where we developed a town strategy and we built it collaboratively. And by the community really pushed it forward and we took a hands off approach, but we're there to provide resource when needed. We helped, you know, the, the finance of the thing and everything. And it's a really strong strategy. So we know we can do it. So we know we can do it. We need to just remember it's about the collaboration. It's about the community. And I think it's also the idea not to just jump in with two feet. I think it's about sometimes making the best of what we already have sometimes in a place. So this Kieran repair or stabilisation approach. You know, maybe there's going to be opportunities where there's a place where it's about judicious, judicious intervention or support resource or whatever it might be to bring something back. And, you know, what value, what that value, that thing might have. So it's about maybe sometimes celebrating a place or, and again, back to ambition. And, you know, it's not just about today and tomorrow. It's about a much longer view on things. And I think we need the right, we know that we need the right conditions for operational, for making it operational. That's an easier way to say it. And so, you know, we're very seriously looking at how we can sort of in-house align our policy and plans and the tools we use and the pilots we use to make things easier for delivery. We also need, we need that strong steer, I guess, in terms of policy and support from Scottish government and MPF when it comes through. We need our planners and planners, but we need more than that. And we know that we need to put resource and skills and be confident in what we do. And we also know that we need to get very delivery focused. And we're quite good at this in part in Aberdeenshire. We've got a delivery team, which I think is very helpful, but we need to get more delivery focused. And we try and set ourselves up at a sort of operational framework to, to work in. And Paul spoke about this. Having this long-term vision that sort of maybe overarches some of the, the cycles that get in, can, can sort of halt things. And, and underpinning that with the, the commitment and the action and like Paul said, the budget. And that needs to be built upon this baseline of, of really good data, of mapping and that ongoing community dialogue so that we can be certain that, that that's there. And then I guess in the middle, we need space for quick wins. Because, because people in not just communities, but I guess ourselves as officers, we need to see wins and we need to see progress. We also need space to test things and try things out. And I guess we need to have a space for failure. I think sometimes it's, it's easy to blame local authority for, for not getting their kind of that together, whatever. So we sometimes get a bit embarrassed by failure, but sometimes that's where the best learning is. So we need to think about that too. So we know, as we sort of said all the way along in, in this conversation is that, you know, the, the emergent guidance provided by Scottish government, we know it's essential for us in Aberdeenshire council to consider how we can meet the delivery of, of this key driver, the twenty minute neighbourhood. And first of all, to sort of think about how we create that baseline, we know this is broader than planning. So we're pulling together all the voices that we need, all the skills that we need and, and all those things. So people that, what we haven't spoken about yet is, you know, learning estates, economic development, developer obligations, housing, so key to this. So, and also skills around the data and then analysts who can interpret it right and help us. And also that, you know, the GIS and the mapping, because can we make this as visual and as accessible as possible? And the data is going to be key and I'm really excited for the next, next presentation to hear what's said about it. But, you know, so we know that a key first step in this process for us is to determine that data availability to establish what we know about our settlements in order to identify any gaps in the evidence base to support the identification and the development of the twenty minute neighbourhood across Aberdeenshire. So at the moment, we're working on a review and a repurposing of something called the Rural Facilities Monitor, which is actually a useful dataset in itself, where, for that's become a wider thing, sort of facilities monitor. And that's going to be one of our mechanisms for driving that forward. So we're in this data phase one at the moment, which is very much about the quantitative data. And we're trying to sort of align around an agreement of what, what are those daily needs on a daily basis in an Aberdeenshire concept, context? What do we think they'll be? We're also looking to, in the process of trying to develop this place data hub, which will contain all our information on those theme, those things pertinent to the local level themes, which I'll come on to. And that'll really help us deliver this baseline for understanding the existing provision of settlements. And then what we want to do with this, this process we're doing at the moment is we want to develop a story map and something we're, we're working on just now to actually be able to visually represent all this data that we have on the council website. So this is again about communities and service users and other organisations being able to look in and pick a place, be it Clapham, be it Strathdon, be it wherever, Ellen, and actually go, no, I recognise that place or I don't recognise that place on its data because there is obviously the, the qualitative data that we can, we can work with. But there's also that sort of lived experience, which is very different. And then that will all sort of be supported by the production of settlement data sheets, which will help us by providing an overview of each of our settlements. And again, tying that back to mapping and keeping things as spatial and visual as possible. So once we've finished all that, we'll be moving on to our phase two, which is where we'll be taking all the data and everything that we've pulled together and really try to assess where those twenty minute neighbourhoods are. So we, you know, and we really, a lot of that will be focused around the academy times. And also to identify where those networks of settlements that exist and try to understand the ones that already work together and that would benefit from that sort of a strength, strengthening of connections. We're also going to be looking to try and identify those settlements that are capable of becoming a twenty minute neighbourhood. So those ones that would benefit from that, the sort of, the interventions that we spoke about, that approach, Kieran, Kieran repair approach spoke about earlier. And this point's really important that we have to then start pulling in the qualitative piece and actually capturing community aspirations. And I guess where we are at the moment with that is we think that we've got to build upon the good work around things like community action plans and things like town strategies that we've got going already. And also local, local place plans and, and how we can get moving with them and, and, and work with communities to deliver those. And also it's about working very closely with our community, our colleagues in community planning, and CLD and, and other partners. And what we want to get to is a report, this title might change, so don't hold me to it. But a living locally in Aberdeenshire report, which is going to kind of pull all this together. And what that will do will give us, it gives us a starting point for be able to start measuring and moving on and seeing how things change and develop through this process of the, the twenty minute neighbourhood. And these are the broad data themes that we're focusing around at the moment. So health and wellbeing, homes and housing, work and economy, lifelong learning, community, travel and transport and shopping and leisure. And I, I don't expect they'll be that surprising to anyone. But the thing that's quite useful about this is that this can then be mapped back to the place standard tool. And that's quite important for us because our communities and as an organisation, it's something we use quite a lot already. We use, it was used extensively, for example, in the Huntley project I referenced earlier. It's used by our policy colleagues and developing the local development plan. It's used by community planning colleagues. It's used by our community councils independently. It's used sometimes through, you know, our local rural partnerships and things. So, so this is again back to that alignment and that streamlining of things because it'll just help our processes be as effective as, as, as we possibly can. And considerations and challenges? Yes, we've got a few. And so here are the hundred and seventy nine settlements. I think I've got them all on there by geographic area. So that's a lot of work and it's a lot of work bringing the data together. And I suppose a point on that data is that the data doesn't align, the geographies are different. It goes down to different levels and different bits. What S I M D geographies are different from health ones. And, you know, I'm glad of analysts. So, so that's, that's difficult. It does make it difficult, especially when you start to drill down to these, these much smaller places. And the fact there's so many of them is a huge challenge as well. And I guess the other challenge as well is when we, when we do our bit, we need to start looking outward. Because if you're in the south of Aberdeenshire, you might go to school in Aberdeenshire, you go shop in Aberdeenshire, but actually your healthcare might be provided in Strathfriar and Angus. So how does that work when we start to move in the boundaries? So that's, that's some of the other challenges and considerations we have to, to get to. So I'll just quickly go over, because I think we're up against time, the Peterhead bit. And so I thought we'd use Peterhead as a bit of a, of a case study. Peterhead's right up there on the nose of the nose of Scotland. And it's got this really impressive bay right at the heart of it, which has got this huge harbour walls by Telfer. It looks like it's taken a bite out of the North Sea. And Peterhead's dead important, really. And nationally, it figures in MPF as national significance in terms of the just transition, the move away from fossil fuels. And regionally and locally for, for us in Aberdeenshire and the wider city region deal, it's really important in terms of an economic driver and jobs and houses and, and all that good stuff. And it's not without its challenges and it's not without its, its, its complexities and inequalities. And there's a lot going on in Peterhead just now. And that includes a, a new campus that's got a master plan for a new campus that's coming forward, which is really important in terms of educational outcomes and creating some parity there. But of course there's knock-on effects there. We've got a bid into, for the, for the north east Scotland Green Freeport with Aberdeen and St Fergus, which I think we hear about in August, which could be very interesting because of course there's so much of the technology innovation around green is happening in Peterhead. And around this area at the moment, we're concerning battery storage, carbon capture and hydrogen innovation. We've got an active bid who are looking at long-term vacant buildings in the town centre and how to bring them back into life. And we've had a real successful sustaining choices project, looking at some creation of an active travel plan. So we've got lots going on, also including a bid for the levelling, for levelling up as well. So it's back to that long term and it's back to that point from the, the improvement service about, you know, the, the, the knock-ons and pulling it all together. So our approach here is that we've pulled together a project team to develop a vision for Peterhead. And we've said from the outset, it's got to be much longer term than usual. So we're looking at sort of a twenty year, a twenty year pan, a twenty year timeframe. And what we, we also, what we're going to try and do within that is identify a vision for Peterhead. And we're going to, along the way, we want to identify the current planned, proposed and aspirational investment, infrastructure assets and social capital within the town and, and the wider area. And not only do we want to do that, we also want to start finding and teasing out where the gaps are over that fifteen to twenty year period that might require that specific activity, finance, funding, resourcing, whatever it might be. And we're really again trying to keep this spatial, keep it visual. And so that it's really easy for whoever looks in on it, whether it be council, public sector, commercial, private sector, third sector, community, about assets and activity that everyone can see who it involves and those timelines for delivery. So we've got time to bring, to actually tack, develop long-term solutions for some of the issues and actually maximise our opportunities in Peterhead. So back to that point about the approach, the first thing we thought of an engagement, but rather than dashing out and doing more engagement, we've done a really deep dive into the engagement we've already done in Peterhead over the last five years, which has been a lot. We've also lent on engagement from, from other partners that can share it. And we've tried to drive out what those priority themes are for the community. And what we're looking at the moment is what still might be missing from that picture, whose voices might be missing from that picture? So that we can actually go out and do what else we need in terms of the, the, the community properly. And we're also really trying to align and review our plans and strategies, of which there are lots. We live in a plan-rich world and, and that says master plan there, but it's probably, vision is probably a better title. But what you end up doing is coming out with kind of wacky diagrams like this. And I suppose that just shows you how important it is about getting the alignment right. Because if we can get that alignment, everything aligned and, and working closely together, we'll get, we'll get more additionality. We'll get more bang for our buck. We'll avoid duplication. And we'll really start to be aware of what everyone else at the table has to offer, be it finance, be it skills, be it intelligence, be it property, whatever, maybe the idea, and the commitment, whatever it is to the table when it comes to Peterhead. And we've also done this really sort of intense, it's not a very good representation of it, but we've done this really good sort of in-depth sort of mapping of all the projects at the different stages they're at, proposed. And, and all the rest of it to really understand because it's all about taking it back to the map. But that's probably enough on Peterhead at the moment. We could probably speak about Peterhead all day. So in terms of us in Aberdeenshire, where we are, we're going to continue to build that baseline. We're going to establish that story map and that place database, which I think are going to be so valuable for us. We're going to go and where we are already embrace those local place plans. And internally, within the service, across service, with elected members and our, and our partners in community, we're going to increase the confidence and the dialogue around this thing. In terms of alignment, we're looking at policy plans and levers and how we can make them fit together better. And we're trying to get aligned behind the idea of delivery, that service delivery. And, and we're also trying to embed that sort of place principle everywhere we go. We're trying to be, you know, brave and experiment and try things out, you know, with a few pilots going on in places like Peterhead and other places. And, and we really are trying to, to commit to those medium and long-term goals. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much to both of you. Paul for your introduction and Lucy for a great presentation and really synthesising some of the stuff that has come out over the past year and the discussions around, this is a new concept. And it's maybe something that's, but it's captured a bit more attention than previous descriptions of the twenty minute neighbourhood. And I suppose from my perspective, the, the big question is, the previous good ideas, which haven't been embedded, haven't gained consistent traction, or how do, why will twenty minute neighbourhoods be the thing that gains traction? And then how do we make sure that it's enforced? However, that's my question. But rather than my questions, there've been a couple of questions coming in the chat. And if people have questions for Lucy and Paul, put them in the chat or, or raise your hand, your digital hand. And, and you can give it orally as well. There's been a couple of questions around engagement, about your plans to engage. And you actually began answering that, I think, at the very end with what you talked about Peterhead. But I don't know if either of you wants to say a wee bit more around engagement on this particular area.
Yeah, I can, I can kick off and Lucy, you can jump in. In Aberdeenshire, we, we kind of take for granted how, how well we engage sometimes. And so it doesn't really always come through in everything that we speak about. So as Lucy spoke about, we, we engage consistently with our communities and it's not necessarily around one specific topic. And we've become good at sharing the data that we harvest from the consultation and engagement with communities. And that, that is one of the, the key or core principles establishing that, that then data hub is that when we do engage and do gather this data, because we're, we're made up of something ridiculous like thirteen services across the council, if we're all kind of keeping our silo, then often we're going back out to consult on the very same things with, with our communities. And so we end up with fatigue and we end up with the same, same messages coming back. Or worse, we end up with really poor responses from the community because they've already given us the answers that we're looking for. We're just not sharing the, the data and the information that we're being given. So what we've become good at is sharing the data. So for example, through the local development plan process, we went through the, the place standard exercise with all our community councils in Aberdeenshire, all our area teams. And once we'd, once we'd got all that data together and we started to use it and we'd assimilated it and made sense of it, we then shared it with the different services. So it became accessible data that other services who were maybe looking towards place-based approaches could then use and utilise rather than going back out to engage with communities. The other thing that we did throughout the pandemic was we, we carried out community impact assessments to get a firm idea on the, the social, the economic, the environmental impacts of the pandemic on our communities. And then start to use that data as the baseline as we move forward. Because we recognise as Lucy's pointed out, we're in this funny situation, are we, are we post-pandemic? Are we, are we pre-pandemic or pre the next wave? We, we don't actually know, but we're in a state of flux. But we do need that baseline data to establish what, what, what the impact's been on our communities, where they're at right now. And then equally start to engage with them as we start to layer up what the plans are going forward. And the other thing that we probably should have mentioned is Aberdeenshire split into six areas. I think in the, the list of settlements, you would have seen the six, six categories, so six areas. Each area has an area manager who's responsible for community planning, community planning partnerships. And so we've been engaged regularly through the, the area teams, especially if we're coordinating place-based approaches. It's easy when you're in a service to be quite centralised, but when you have those area managers and those area teams, it allows us then to engage directly with the communities. But equally, the area managers and area teams tend to be best placed to, to give that insight into, into the community and create that relationship between the services and the community. And some of the other questions around engagement that I saw were, were, were around different stakeholders, partners. And I think the idea is, yes, as a, as an organisation, you'd imagine a, a place strategy as such would completely change your strategic framework using place data, health, wellbeing data to really drive for the key outcomes and priorities that we want to achieve. And then that links directly back into the notion of the twenty minute neighbourhood. How do you create, you know, opportunities for, for transformation, lifelong learning, equally better life decisions that lead to a much healthy, healthier lifestyle in our communities as well? So the idea is that once we've established the framework, and once it's firmly embedded across the different services, that yeah, all the different services will be aligned to, to delivery. And as Lucy pointed out, Peterhead being the example, we create a, a short, medium and long-term action plan in there. But the idea of that action plan is code delivery. So there will be private sector investment through the local development plan process, sites that are identified for development through the Peterhead plan. For example, we'll go into the local development plan or be put forward for development. So we'll have that certainty of what the community aspiration is for new development in their place. And then we start to move towards that's private sector development. But equally, we have council services and stakeholders who are also embedded within the process, also have responsibility for delivering different actions, as do the community and third sector too. also have responsibility for delivering different actions, as do the community and third sector too. Sorry, that's a bit of a long winded answer, but I think it covers.
No, but you've you've been, you've been reading the comments as as Lucy's been speaking, so you have had a chance to think about it. And I think your comment, I think Lucy, I think when I met one of your colleagues from Peterhead, that analysis of community consultation, I think she said it had been over about four or five years, it's been about seventeen different and collections of of information from the community, which actually told you what gave a good idea of things the community had repeatedly said. And I think in the evidence given to Parliament actually around N P F for community consultation, which, you know, is crucial, there was a high amount of responses to that of from a community perspective, people saying they're very tired of responding to things or being asked the same things by different parts of authority. So that issue of the local authority bringing all the different bits of this information together is obviously really important. One of the other questions that's come up, which you may be partially answered, Paul, was Lucy, you referred to a delivery team. So there's there's been some requests for a bit more information on what that delivery team is responsible for delivering and asking who leads on it and is integrated into the overall council decision making.
Yeah, don't want me to go with that. And yeah, no, I'm part of the delivery team. The delivery team falls part of Paul's service, it's part of the the planning economy service. And first and foremost, our role is around the delivery of L D P sites. But that's as the sort of teams grown and been used, it has expanded. So we will do those things. And I think someone puts in the question, the question where we do engage, so we will engage with private, private developers. We'll engage with communities, we'll increase across service, we'll pull in the right resources so that we can help delivery happen. And and is what we do, so it might be a regeneration project in Banff. It might be about expediting delivery somewhere like Chappellton. So it's a it's a pretty broad remit, but it's a very good fun job.
And so is a delivery team that's Aberdeenshire wide, not not in the city, not delivery teams for each area, it's an Aberdeenshire wide delivery team?
Yeah, the 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 delivery team covers a a plethora of tasks. But to be honest, they they are pan Aberdeenshire and they provide support to, I would say, every service in the council when it comes to delivery aspects. And I think the the important thing is they're also key to the future infrastructure services group, which we have, which starts to look at what the the key infrastructure interventions that need to be delivered in order to, one is an organisation to fulfil our capital requirements and statutory duties. But the other element is how do you deliver the development plan? Because every time you allocate land, there's an impact, development does have an impact. So future infrastructure services group identifies the, I suppose, the infrastructure needed in order to deliver the development plan. But the other aspect is that's the building, the delivery plan for when that that infrastructure is going to be implemented. So it allows us to to think about the phasing of of works, it allows us to align our, I suppose, our development plan to our capital investments. And equally allows the our key stakeholders and partners to to understand and and to work with us in collaboration as to how we deliver infrastructure across Aberdeenshire too.
Chris, Woodness has asked a asked a question, he's reworded it slightly, around how you integrate between community led and officer led, you know, asking the classic question, are we dealing with or two? I don't know if you want to draw on any of the specific places that you've done some work in over the past couple of years on this, where you say it has been community led and or how officers relate to the community's aspirations?
I I think it's safe to say Aberdeenshire's in a in a place of transition. Whereas previous years, yes, I would have said regeneration was was officer led. But what we've seen over the last, I'd say, five years is a clear movement towards community led regeneration. Fraserburgh being a prime example, in terms of the the recent town centre and concert regeneration scheme, but equally the the car scheme that's recently completed. And we didn't sit in a in a room and come up with a list of interventions. And we went out and engaged with communities to gather the data set that then evidenced the key interventions that needed to be delivered. But not only that, we then, once we'd kind of drafted up what our thinking was, we then went back to the community to get their views, to make sure the community understood what we were going to be effectively investing in, but making sure the community were around it and taking ownership for it. So many of the projects that were delivered through Fraserburgh were actually led and over by the community. And even now, as we move on to the next phase of regeneration and Fraserbras was starting to head towards the the waterfront master plan, it's going to be a community led master plan, a community regeneration master plan as such. When we start to look at the key interventions needed to to maximise opportunity that exists in the waterfront, but really to deliver those those significant facilities that the community are are striving for. So in a similar vein, if you look at Peterhead and and you look at the work that's been done in the town centre specifically, we you'd see that we've we've kind of turned things completely on its head in the town centre. We have our vacancy rate in the town centres down to six percent. And but if you look at the six, the the six percent of units that are vacant, they're not viable units. So in effect, we have a hundred percent occupancy in the town centre and that's part of engaging with the community as Lucy highlighted seventeen times over the last five years. But understanding what the 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 key drivers were, what did they want to see in their town centre? And then, you know, taking that data and then putting it into projects that were effectively delivered through the community. So making sure that they were at the heart of everything that we were doing. And that's where we think we've seen the real success. So Paul, we know that we want to transition to play strategy. We know that we want to 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 really deliver on the concept of the rural twenty minute neighbourhood in Aberdeenshire. There's a lot of really good groundwork already been done, which I suppose I kind of drew on earlier on by saying, sometimes we take for granted how how engagement embedded are the community are. And and I suppose Lucy's also highlighted that through through engaging with the community in such a way, it allows us to move to a much more design led approach. Where it may be two steps forward and one step back as we start to to identify the projects and the key interventions that need to be delivered. But it's making sure that at every point, the community are empowered to actually tell us what it is that they want. But equally, what we're not doing right and how we can improve upon it.
Okay, two final questions. Quite an interesting one around, and this is, and this is the one that kind of comes up in some of the rural discussions we've had, that is if somewhere has your analysis of settlements of capable, coming twenty minute neighbourhoods, are the circumstances for a settlement would be deemed incapable? And if so, is there a risk that these settlements are left further behind? And that's been a consistent question in previous events we've had around if we choose hubs and we're not choosing other places, what what does that mean? I think you maybe touched on it a bit, Lucy, but I don't know if you want to speak a wee bit further about that. And then the other question I think deserves an answer is from Ian Wardrop, which is if there's one ask of other public sector partners to help you, what would it be?
Well, oh, I don't know, I've probably got too much to ask. And so the first question, there was about leaving places behind. And no, we don't want to do that. And it's actually a really, really tricky balance when you've got somewhere really big like Peterhead and it's got so much complexity and and so much significance as well in terms of jobs and 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 finance. There is, there is a worry that sometimes that, you know, the places round about lose out because of that. But I suppose there's, there's two things that makes me think of there is that, you know, we have got the area teams who have got a holistic area approach, which helps us with that. And we've also got this, I think, this trait, going back to the community led thing, that that the more rural our communities are, the more engaged they are in some ways with community led stuff and the more innovative they are. So we've got some really interesting projects that the community's taken the lead and we're trying to follow in behind and support them where they can, when we can with things like, like Tarling Community Housing Group and other community housing groups. So they've led the way, they've, you know, we've supported to help them do their housing needs assessment and give them the skills and stuff they need and the support we can, but they've led the way and shown us that. And we've sort of, you know, when we see that, we'll we'll build around about it as well. So it's just really difficult, Paul talked about budgets, you know, crisis and everything like that, it's really tricky. So so it's very much a forefront of our mind because we are so many little places. That is our strength in so many ways, we can't forget about them at all. And 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 what would be our one ask of other partners, Paul? I don't know, I would ask lots of things.
Only one.
But I I would comment that we have some really good working relationships with our partners. We've done some really good stuff, like people at Scottish Water, like Transport, Nez Tras, we we've got some really good ones. In fact, we've probably got quite a particularly close relationship, but to be fair and saying with health and social care partners. And and that's a real strength for us. And actually, the one, the unusual one, sometimes forgotten one would be the fire service. Actually, back to our ruralness, the fire service are 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 a real help in our local areas. And they've they've offered their fire services as private spaces, they've used them as COVID places. And then they, quite often, they don't necessarily have money to take to the table, but they very often have skills and resource. And and we've done some really interesting local projects, projects with them. So I've probably got lots of asks and they've probably got lots of asks of us, to be honest.
But that's a very example, I know that Ian's been working with the fire services, so he'll be very interested in that response. Paul, do you have a a one request from key agencies?
I I think it's it's the communication piece, as Lucy can highlight it. I think the the key thing is that we keep talking to each other. We might not not always see eye to eye, we might not always align, but if we can articulate our work streams to to each other, there's a greater chance that we can collaborate and and make the effective changes that need to be made. And and just on on Lucy's point, on when the more rural community has been left behind. I think that it's always at the back of your mind that, you know, that if we if we move to to academy towns as the hubs, then what about those rural communities? And the key for me is having those those physical and and digital links that radiate out from the hubs to make sure that everybody's still connected, so that we're we're not going to be leaving anyone behind. And certainly as we look at the political decisions across Aberdeenshire that need to be made. You know, I did highlight that we have academy towns, but we also have over a hundred primary schools. Those primary schools are often the hubs of of those communities. So how do we sustain those communities? And it might not be through physical investment, but digital investment such as, you know, we might be fifty minutes away from a health centre, but can be repurposed a room within a primary school to become, you know, a digital surgery for people to attend, you know, healthcare appointments, for example. So making sure that they still have access to the right services and facilities. Don't get me wrong, I think if we were to to start comparing the time it takes to get to a sports pitch in Aberdeenshire, you'll probably find that there's one within two minutes every house. And and that includes rural communities. But I think it's recognising that diversity and 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 services and facilities and how they're dispersed across our geography. And equally, how we maintain, not only do we maintain access to to these services and facilities, but also how we how we start to move towards the long term retention of them as well. And that that that's where the collaboration with key agencies does come in and services and communities. Because all communities will feel empowered to to take ownership of these facilities and sustain them. And if we can help them in such a way to do it, then we will. Good examples, paths, a rural path network in Aberdeenshire. We've spent the last couple of years of working with communities to take ownership of the paths to maintain them. And so it means that we might pay for the insurance, the indemnity insurance for the path. We might pay for the all the tools, but we've also went through the the education process of working with the community councils and community groups to take ownership and to maintain the paths. So again, it's it's a cost that we we don't have, it's not a long term cost. But then you have a community that are taking active ownership of of their own community, their own place, maintaining the the connections.
Okay, well, and thank you very, thank you both very much for the presentation and the answers to the questions. And there's been some good comments in the sidebar as well with other mapping and the other people have used and pointed to the green map. And Kirsty's pointing to one of the Quarters for Scotland, asset mapping, all of which are necessary as part of data gathering to understand how our places work, as well as the experience of the people who live in them. And obviously it's through engagement that you really understand that. So thank you very much. I'm sure we'll probably come back to you because we're all, the, as you have said, it's iterative, it's a developing policy area. And what we're most in, what I'm most interested in is how we kind of make it happen, move beyond the idea to actually what submitting and decision making. And I suppose one of the other things will be making sure there's continued political support for it. Because obviously, as you've referred to, there are, these are political decisions. And and all politicians want something in their in their patch and want the best thing for their ward members or constituents. So it's be interesting to see how that sort of maps out as all you look, all the authorities will have new members within their composition. So making sure that they continue to support this as an agenda will be interesting to see what impact that has as well. But thank you very much to both of you and we'll see what John has to say next. So thank you very much, Lucy and Paul. As Lucy said, data is foundational to a lot of the understanding. And I think going back to the very first presentation we had, it was a database research done by Ramble as to what a twenty minute neighbourhood policy meant across Scotland. And that revealed at a high level that it was possible to deliver twenty minute neighbourhoods across urban Scotland. I think that was the conclusion of the Ramble research. And that explains why maybe we're still having a bit of tension around its application in rural areas. But John, who's presenting next, has done some fascinating research using data sets, which goes a bit more granular than the work that Ramble did. And so, John, I'll hand over to you and you can tell us and tell the audience a bit more about where you've come from and and then share your research with everyone.
Fantastic, thanks, Ewan. I'll just share my slides now. So hopefully you can see that fine and dandy. Yep. So, yep, Ewan, thank you so much for the opportunity to come to this surf forum today. It was great to lead, to follow on from that fantastic piece of work that Lucy and Paul just presented. And I just wanted to introduce myself. So I'm a researcher at the Places and Health Programme at the Social and Public Health Sciences Unit at the University of Glasgow. And in terms of where we're coming from in our work in the twenty minute neighbourhood, well, our programme is really interested in understanding how where we live can improve population health and also reduce health inequalities. And we do this in two ways, by exploring proximity and access and use to both health benefiting and health harming environments. So we use many traditional approaches such as buffers around homes to maybe describe a local neighbourhood. And there's lots of different discussions about what a home neighbourhood is, as the previous talk just mentioned, you know, should we be thinking about a neighbourhood? You know, as populations are becoming increasingly mobile, we're travelling different places, we have access to facilities across a much wider urban landscape. So we've moved more to using advanced approaches. And this maybe uses GPS data sets to understand exactly where people are going, the places they have access to, the places they're using. And ultimately, what we want to do is use this data to understand how that local access or much wider access can influence people's health. So if we're thinking about this neighbourhood concept, what we really wanted to know was how a twenty minute neighbourhood could influence individuals' access to health benefiting or harming local environments? The variation in access for all Scottish residential locations? And then how this might vary in access to different types of facilities and amenities? And what we did here was we grouped these into particular domains that I'll describe in a bit more detail. And then we also wanted to do this nationwide, as the policy in Scotland will in the draft framework particularly mentions that the ambitions in Scotland to have a twenty minute neighbourhood policy nationally. So we wanted to look at how that varies by the socio economic status of an individual and by the urban rural status of the residential location. And what I just want to highlight here is that we have done a little bit of work specific to natural space across Scotland. And we wanted to look at how individuals' access to natural space and variation by socio economic status and housing tenure and how that actually was related to use. And what we found is that actually, access to green space across Scotland is pretty good. Around ninety percent of respondents lived within a ten minute walk of a natural space, meeting the policy specification for a twenty minute neighbourhood. And actually, for natural space, it's really important that greater proximity was associated with increased use. But what we did find that actually, just looking at this in this way of access first use, didn't really bring forward those variations in access and use by socio economic status and housing tenure, which is really important when we think about people who are living in social housing, who may not have access to their own private green space, actually used their local green space less frequently, even though they did actually have good access. So there's a lot of nuances here that we need to think about in terms of actually the quality of that space and why people aren't using them, when actually if we use a quantitative binary, do you have access or not? They're coming out as good access. And and this, there's been a lot of green space research, but actually, why didn't it get to the twenty minute neighbourhood across the range of facilities and amenities is really important. And that's what we wanted to do here in this study. And just to highlight that green space Scotland. And just to highlight that Green Space Scotland have produced a summary of this report, which is much easier to read and quite nice. And Emma's just going to add those links to this paper and the report to the chat if you wanted to read a bit more about this. So the objectives of the research that I'm going to present here were to create 20 minute neighbourhood catchment areas across Scotland for health, transport, education, social and recreational domains. And then for all Scottish residential locations. So what we did was we identified the punt location of all postcodes across Scotland, so 146,000 residential postcodes. We wanted to describe whether they were situated within a 20 minute neighbourhood catchment. So that is that they had access to all of those domains. And then describe variation in this access to domains by socio economic status and urbanicity. And then potentially explore the effect of increasing that boundary slightly. So if we're thinking about a 20 minute neighbourhood as a 10 minute walk, and it's quite often talked about in Scotland in the Rambles report, for example, as an 800 metre distance. So what about if we increase that to 1200 metres and thought about it as a 30 minute neighbourhood? What actual impact would that have in access to key facilities and amenities? And how would that vary by urban rural location and socio economic status? And that answers some of the questions that just came up about could we slightly increase the distance to maybe improve access for certain populations? So what we wanted to do was identify domains and attributes that were key to the 20 minute neighbourhood concept. And domains were chosen based on high quality national data sets available, so quantitative resources. And what's really interesting, I've spoken to a lot of local authorities recently, and it's fantastic local data. But these are localised, so we weren't able to actually use this nationally. So we've used a lot of robust data from sources such as Ordinate Survey and the Scottish Government and the Departments for Transport of the UK Government to identify domains and attributes that were required for daily needs. And these are based around the place standard. And what you can see here is that we've been able to identify quantitative data sources for around half of those place standards. So it's really showing that although these quantitative data can tell us a lot about the important features of a place and how we might rate how good our place is, that actually there's still a lot of local knowledge and qualitative understanding that's still required to really complement the full understanding of a 20 minute neighbourhood. So we identified 11 domains from healthy food retail, local primary care, community health resources, public transport, all the way through to public spaces, green spaces, social and cultural and eating establishments. And what I just want to highlight is for our public transport domain here, we are actually able to assess the quality of that public transport. And we did this by joining the timetable data that was available by Travel Line to each individual public transport stop across the entirety of Scotland. And what we were able to do is look for each stop location, the number of transit visits per per hour, per day, and we were able to identify whether that was a high frequency public transport stop that had more than four transit visits per hour between the hours of 6am and 6pm. So that's something that I'll talk a bit more about in the results. So we gathered all of this data and then what we wanted to do was perform a spatial data linkage. And I'll be able to show you some maps which really visualise this really nicely. And I picked out Elgin, but this was produced nationally. So for example, our healthy food domain, we were able to locate all supermarkets within Scotland. So here, these little blue pins show a supermarket location. And then we created these sort of 20 minute neighbourhood catchment areas. So they did this for a 600 metre service area, thinking about a 15 minute neighbourhood, an 800 metre service area, thinking about a 20 minute neighbourhood, and then a 1200 minute service area, thinking about a 30 minute neighbourhood. And we use the National Road and Path Network. So these are road and path network buffers around each individual domain. And then what we did, as I mentioned, those postcode locations for all 146,000 residential locations in Scotland, we also plotted these. So each little red dot is a residential location in Scotland. So here we have Elgin and Lossiemouth, and then the sort of more rural areas out to Hopeman, for example. And what we were able to do then was select whether that residential location was within a catchment area of that service. So we can see here where they turned blue, that'd be yes, they're within a 10 minute walk of a supermarket, healthy food retail. And where they've remained red, they are not within that surface area. And we were able to do that for green space as well and create those surface areas around the green space access points, which the data is available from Ordinate Survey, and then link that to the postcode locations. So once we did that spatial data linkage for all of those 11 domains, we then were able to assess the proportion of Scottish postcodes that had access to at least one facility within a 10 minute walk of that residential location. And what we can see is around 90% of Scottish residential locations had access to a public transport and accessible public open space, so similar to the paper I mentioned earlier. But actually, this varies significantly by those individual domains. So local primary healthcare, so a GP, or a local walking centre had pretty poor access nationally of around 40%. And when we actually looked at this by the twofold urban rural classification for Scotland, we can see for urban areas that actually the number of proportion of residential locations that had access improved dramatically. So for public transport and accessible public open space, we're nearly at the high 90%, almost 100%. But for rural locations, this did drop significantly to about 60%. And again, for those local primary healthcare facilities and services, we're just around 18%, 19% have access to that within a 800 metre buffer. And one of the key things that we were interested in was this variation by the residential location socio economic status. And we use this from the Scottish Index of Multiple Deprivation. And we assigned that to all 146,000 residential locations to look at access. And across all domains, we actually found that access to a facility or amenity was greater for the more deprived locations. So we can see this trend downwards where the least deprived areas actually had poorer access. So what we're really showing here is that the most deprived areas do not have poorer access to facilities and amenities if we use a binary yes no access. And it's really important, I think what this stresses is that maybe we need to go further and think about the quality of those spaces and this in different ways. Because if we're just thinking about socio economic status as the area, then the least deprived areas are actually, sorry, the most deprived areas are actually quite well serviced. So how does this work in terms of the residential location being situated within a 20 minute neighbourhood? Well, we found that around 20% of Scottish residential locations had access to all of the 11 domains, and we may say that they lived within a 20 minute neighbourhood. This is slightly higher for urban locations, which is around 27%, but much lower for those rural locations of around only 5%. So those rural residential locations were within a 20 minute neighbourhood and had access to all of the 11 domains within a 10 minute walk. And we can see here that the difference by domain, so only 4% had access to 10, 6% 9, and 6% 8 for rural locations. So actually, the largest proportion of rural locations actually had access to either zero or one domain. So it just shows some differences. And we were able to plot this across the entirety of Scotland to show the variation in domains nationally. And if I just zoom in to Glasgow, we can see these darker blue areas have much greater access. So the sort of west end areas of the city, the city centres slightly lower because they don't have access to facilities such as schools and healthcare, whereas residential areas do. And it really highlights geographically the variation across the city. So these lighter areas have poorer access, but for a city like Glasgow, generally, they're quite high in these darker blue, high access areas. So finally, I just want to highlight that there is something further to think about in terms of left behind neighbourhoods. And that was mentioned in the chat previously. And we can see here, if we just think about access to 20 minute domains by those areas that have less than eight domains within a 10 minute walk and nine or more domains. And we can see this pretty even overall of around 50% of each. If we look at the most deprived areas of Scotland, that actually, you know, 72%, so a much higher proportion have access to nine or more domains. But that still leaves 28% who are in the most deprived area and have actually poor access to domains. And we might think about these as left behind neighbourhoods. And what our data allows us to do is actually map the location of these left behind neighbourhoods. And you could spot where they are, say for Glasgow, which have zoomed in here. But this data is available across the entirety of Scotland from our data set. And it links very much to work that's been conducted in England to think about the left behind neighbourhood and how we can understand communities on the edge. And it just shows that this data could be used to repeat that work, for example, in Scotland. And that was a comment that was just mentioned in the chat. So finally, I just want to talk about the difference in access to domains. If we increase the buffer from an 800 metre size to 1200 metre to think about a 30 minute neighbourhood. And we can see that the significant benefit here is for urban areas where a slight increase in a walking distance results in around a quarter of residential locations having access to all 11 domains to around 50%. And for rural areas, although there's about a doubling, it's from a very low baseline of 5% to around 9% of Scottish residential locations. So I realise I'm at the end of time now, but just to say we'll be publishing this data in an academic publication and via an online web tool, which allows users to search at postcode level and extract information at postcode, data zone and local authority. And just to say thank you very much, and I think we're now opening for questions, Eren.
We are. Thank you very much, John. And so the first question is, when do you think, I suppose, both the web tool and the paper will be available?
So we're hoping it'll be the early autumn, so maybe around September, October time.
Right, okay. And so everyone needs to, John's presentation, I will tell you all now, we're not sharing John's presentation as a separate document, although it's in the recording, because obviously it's a live piece of research. So we're saving the public, we're not sharing his presentation because it will be all available publicly along with the web tool later on in this year. And I think, John, to me, the thing that was most interesting when we first met, it was that basically the data that 72% of Scotland's most deprived areas had a good provision of facilities. And I suppose I'm thinking about your wider role and the unit you work with in Glasgow. I suppose obviously the question in the sidebar is why are people not using those facilities, which are not necessarily answerable by just data research? And it comes back to the same reason why people are not using parks. And I don't know if you want to talk a bit more about about that side of the, of what your data research reveals about behaviours?
Yeah, I think we know a lot about people who use spaces, such as if we're thinking about the example of green space. There's great amounts of research about what people who use the spaces are using them for, what they're going there and the health benefits of using those spaces. But there's a really key missing link about people who don't use it. And actually, they're often the people with the worst health outcomes, where the benefits of green space or actually a wide variety of local facilities and amenities could actually benefit their health. So trying to understand why people don't use those spaces. So I think there's two ways of exploring that is thinking about the quality of those spaces. So actually, do people who live in more deprived areas have poorer quality spaces? And that's something we want to understand. And actually, how people perceive the spaces and want to use them. So a lot of people who use green space have an orientation to nature, so they want to use that space. So I think that's where maybe the tools such as the place standard could help us. And it's that question of how do you reach hard to reach populations to actually gain their views? And it was, it was great to see some of the questions earlier about what do people feel about community engagement? And you often think about community engagement and gathering the views of local communities. And we often see the same views of the same types of people. So I think there's a key task, which I don't know the answer to, of how do we engage the full spectrum of service users of our population to understand their views and why they use places or they don't?
So one of the questions or observations that Robert Livingston made, when we're using some of the data sets you've used around the availability of assets and I suppose cultural venues or community venues may exist. But is, have you come across any means of identifying how they exist? Are they, are they programmed? Are events programmed in them? And would be the more, is it important that, I don't know if you've been able to source anything that helps with that?
No, and I think that's for, I think what we were able to do, because the data was available nationally, was think about the quality of public transport stops. And that was great because we were able to access it. And if we were able to do similar types of things for cultural events or cultural facilities and including things like cost of entry, because that's potentially a barrier to people using it. Even we included sports facilities and picking holes are what we did here. But these are just sports facilities, you know, we didn't include whether they were council run and whether there were, you know, whether it's a David Lloyd gym, for example, you know, which actually is inaccessible to the majority of the population through the cost barriers, or whether it was a local council run that ran three programmes for children. So, and that's where I think this local knowledge can really, really come in and help it. But I think, I think that our organisations, such as, we've worked with Natural England recently, who hold their own data sets around their assets around the United Kingdom. So such as whether, what type of heritage site it is, whether it's accessible, whether it's in disrepair, and what type of things people could use it for.
And are there any other, I suppose, how have you found accessing Scottish data from any key agencies? Is there anybody that you are looking for help with getting information from? Or are there people that you are aware of whole data sets that you're finding difficult to access?
So we've used most of our data set from Ordinate Survey because they're robust. This data that would be great to get hold of would be active travel infrastructure. An example that's really world leading is Transport for London audited their entire active travel data set. And they're able actually to assess the quality of the infrastructure. So whether it's a segregated lane or whether it's, it's just a lane on a path, the road speed, for example. So that type of information could just be fantastic. Because if we're thinking about active travel, some of the data sets that are available don't really hold that information. So we don't know whether it's a, you know, a fantastic resource or if it's a faded painted line on a really busy road that you might not want to take your children.
Again, that's a work that Living Streets has done, and they do, they do commission on a commission basis. So it's not, again, it's not giving you a nationwide. Kirsty's asked one of the questions of you, is it possible to use Strava or commute data? I don't know how that would fall for you.
Yeah, so one of the groups we work with uses Strava. One of the problems is that people, the representative nature of Strava in terms of people who are using Strava and, you know, it's, it's kind of a a certain population group who are sort of keen active travellers or cyclists or runners. So they are useful in terms of their heat maps, in terms of showing where that population group is. But I think because our research, we do focus on understanding health inequalities. We've stayed away from Strava, but those type of open source resources are useful as a piece of the jigsaw. To tell the story about how people are using their cities and urban areas for different activities.
And so, I mean, I thought one of the things that I thought was helpful, we should show, because you're very clear that you're gathering specific sets of data. And it is primarily quantitative, although I think that your transport data is revealing qualitative stuff. I suppose I have a query in this transport data, because some of the conversations that we've been having with. Communities across Scotland is because they're dependent on the bus service. But that's a very changeable and the timetables are quite changeable. And because of COVID, bus services have changed. As bus services, the demand dropped, the timetables are being adapted to the drop in demand, which are disproportionately affecting people who are possibly in the service industry. Who are working at times that are not core nine to five type things. And so I don't know, I suppose, how often in your toolkit, how often will that sort of timetable data be refreshed?
That's a really good question, actually. And I don't think we've, I think we've used it as a snapshot at the moment, which the data are from. We discussed whether doing it pre twenty nineteen because of those huge changes. But actually, I don't think the timetables are going to return exactly, especially when you look at the train times. They've changed a lot and have even changed a lot in the past few months with the strikes. So, yeah, that is something that we need to consider. But the timetable data is available, it's released, I think, weekly. So the ability to do that and for us maybe to write a programme. That, you know, does update our toolset is feasible.
Right, okay. And Natalie Thompson from Midlothian has made some good points. One of her, one of her early points was around the provision of public toilets. And I know that during lockdown, that became apparent with restaurants and cafes being shut. And the people became much more aware of the lack of public provision. And that actually limited some people's access to going out for walks, which everyone did during COVID. Because their walks were determined by the availability for some people of public toilets. I don't know, have you put public toilets in as a dataset at all?
No, we haven't, but in a separate piece of work we're doing to further our work around. Access to green spaces and trying to understand why people use them. We've used public toilets as a quality marker of that space. So the data are available through open, a source called Open Street Map, which I'm sure a lot of you've used. And they have collected that data. So, but we've not used it, we tried to focus very much on facilities and amenities linked to daily, daily need. But toilets could be a great indicator of the quality of a green space.
There may be, there may be more than daily. John, thank you very, thank you very much for agreeing to present to us today at the point that you are in research. I think it's really important that people are aware that there's search is ongoing. Because I think it will become quite fundamental to how some local authorities then begin using that sort of data. But I think what's really important, Natalie makes the point in her comments, her most recent comment in the sidebar. And you've made it actually in your presentation is that you, the place standard, you've aligned it with the place standard, some of which is, you know, factual, quantitative data. But our understanding of places and around how we work and live in them in a twenty minute neighborhood sense and a living well locally sense. And is qualitative, it requires a lot more people on the ground doing that, which in the time cuts. Becomes challenging both for a public sector and for the third sector, many of the audience will be representing today. But it's, it's really important information for us to be able to use to make greater points about the needs that communities have and delivering these policies. So thank you very much, John. No doubt we will probably invite you back as your research. Particularly to see how it becomes used by people like Paul and Lucy who we've heard before. So thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
So we've looked at data, need for good data, but the high importance of quality of our experiential information. And understanding how twenty minute neighbourhoods work in reality. And but we are now going to look at the transport issue because throughout our discussions on twenty minute neighbourhoods. Transport has been a recurring refrain, our last event, we looked at community hub transport. But we are now going to hear from Flora from Transport Scotland, because we're going to look at what is a wider agenda and what this means for the whole of Scotland. And maybe more specifically what it means for urban Scotland. But I think Flora will be looking for our help in how this agenda in reducing car use in Scotland can be delivered. Over to you, Flora.
Thanks so much, Ewan, for the opportunity and really great to follow two such interesting presentations. I might just push back a little bit on your introduction, Ewan, in terms of relevance to urban versus rural areas. And perhaps just ask the audience to suspend judgment on that a little bit until the end of the presentation. And then really happy to have a discussion focused on that, if you think that would be useful. And so just to introduce myself briefly, my background's actually in public health. So it was really interesting hearing some of that equalities work, but currently working within Transport Scotland. On the development and delivery of the roadmap to reduce car use. So I'm just going to talk a little bit in terms of background and why we need to change. Then talk a bit more about the behaviour change approach that we've taken to this work. And the support that we know is out there for change. And the importance of ensuring a just transition and then want to leave time at the end to have a bit of a conversation. Around how this work could potentially be embedded in all of the great work that's being done on twenty minute neighbourhoods and beyond. So by way of background, the commitment to reduce car kilometres by twenty percent by twenty thirty. Comes from the climate change plan update, which was published in, back in December twenty twenty. And the draft roadmap was published this year in January in conjunction with COSLA. And has been out to consultation, the consultation is now closed and we're now in the process of refreshing that roadmap. And so the important thing about the roadmap and the linkage to twenty minute neighbourhoods is that the roadmap looks beyond transport policy. And to think of ways that we can support people to live better lives while using their cars less. And thinking around this framing, this behaviour change framework and the four behaviours that we want to encourage to help reduce car use. So reducing people's need to travel, encouraging living well locally, which particularly chimes with twenty minute neighbourhood agenda. Switching modes where that's possible and then combining or sharing journeys or trips where a car is still necessary, such as in rural areas. So just a little bit of background in terms of what we know about car access and usage. And these, or some of this data is from before the pandemic, but actually we know that car usage is almost back to pre pandemic levels. And we know that public transport usage hasn't quite recovered. And we know that even although a proportion of the population are still working from home. Car usage seems to be being used for other trip types, because most people have a kind of sunk cost of having access to a car. And they continue to make use of it, even if they're no longer using it for that commuting purpose. And so again, the urban rural thing is really interesting for us. And just to acknowledge that the fact that whilst the majority of our population live in urban areas or small towns. We recognise that there's significant minority who don't live in such well connected areas. And as I've said before, we know cars, they're currently the most dominant mode of travel. But really interestingly, and particularly from an equity perspective, we know that a significant number of households. And an even more significant number of households on the lowest income don't have access to a private car. And so just a little bit more about trip types. We can see that the kind of most common trip types are split between commuting, leisure, shopping. I think we often hear a lot about commuting, and particularly in previous discourse where talk about car has often been about switching to another mode. It's often commuting that's the focus there. But it's really important that if we're going to meet our national target, that we look at all of those trip types. And the reason why the urban rural issue is of such great interest to us is because this is an emissions target. It's not about congestion or air pollution in cities or reducing road danger in built up areas. It's about reducing overall emissions and that's why it's a kilometer target. And it's really important therefore that we look at how we address some of those longer journeys as well as the short journeys. Because the longer journeys that are going to be contributing disproportionately to overall kilometres in Scotland and therefore overall emissions. And so absolutely recognising that reducing car use will be more challenging for certain people, including those in rural island communities. And those who use their cars as a mobility aid, or have specific business needs. And reiterating this is a national target, it's not for every individual to be reducing their car use by the same percentage. But equally, we want to make sure that the benefits of reduced car use are shared across the whole population and not just confined to those more urban areas. And so I'm not going to kind of dwell on this too much. We know that car use is a huge contributing factor to our emissions and therefore to climate change. But interestingly, we know from research that switching just from current car use to electric vehicles won't be enough to meet our emissions envelope. We need to reduce the use of private vehicles as well as switching remaining trips to lower emission vehicles. And the car reduction roadmap is in line with our wider national transport strategy, which has priorities around reducing inequalities, tackling climate change. Delivering inclusive economic growth and improving health and wellbeing, all of which again are really well aligned with the twenty minute neighbourhoods approach. And so because I'm from a public health background, big interest for me alongside climate is obviously the health and wellbeing benefits that we could gain. If we address this issue in terms of air quality, road danger, physical activity, noise and air pollution. And community severance, but also boosting local economies. And again, links there to twenty minute neighbourhoods and town centre agendas. And really importantly, from an equity perspective, the fact that all of those negative impacts of car use. Or disproportionately on more vulnerable groups, groups who often don't have a car themselves and therefore don't have the opportunity. To benefit in any of those individual level benefits of private car travel. And so this is really just to reiterate that we kind of have this, this opportunity now from a, from a climate change policy perspective to think about. Do we just shift what we have to electric vehicles? Or do we actually look for a completely different mix and a different way of how we live our lives? Which will give us a much broader range of optimal outcomes. I'm not going to go through this in detail, but this is just an example of how reducing car use and more sustainable travel can impact positively. On the full range of national performance framework outcomes that the Scottish government have. But will be equally applicable at local authority level in terms of the wide range of outcomes that people are trying to achieve at that local level. And similarly at a global level in terms of supporting those wider sustainable development goals. So just to talk a little bit about the behaviour change approach that we took. And this is based both on the ISM model, which is used in Scottish government. But also the COMB model, which people may be familiar with from other pieces of work, which looks at. Giving people the capability, opportunity and motivation to be able to support their behaviour change. So absolutely recognising that people's individual behaviours are shaped by the social and material environments they live in. And this is not just about telling people what to do, it's about supporting them with that necessary regulation, infrastructure, norms. And, and sort of community, community support to really, to really make those changes. But also recognising that in order to change people's behaviour, it's important to have something really clear that we're asking people to do instead. So a message that's just about reducing car use is not likely to be effective. And that's what has led us to come up with the four sustainable travel behaviours, which I will go on to talk about. So this was in recognition again of the fact that this is a national target and that we want the benefits to be distributed nationally. And we don't want to just be looking at switching modes, which I think is the thing that people most commonly think of when they think about reducing car use. We absolutely want to be looking at how we can support people who do still need to have access to a car for certain trips. But to think before they get in the car automatically about whether there's another way that they could potentially meet that need. So potentially considering the use of online options. Considering the use of a more local destination, which because our target is about car kilometres travelled. Even if somebody does still need to use their car to travel, particularly those who use their cars as a mobility aid. Will still contribute to that reduction in overall kilometres if they choose to drive and perhaps park in the Blue Vage Bay in their local twenty minute neighbourhood. Rather than driving someplace out of town. And obviously switching modes to walking, feeling cycling, public transport. And recognising that that might be easier if people have already chosen to switch to a more local destination as well. Because there might be more options to visit that, that hub. And then thinking about other ways that again, perhaps more relevant in rural areas around combining, combining journeys and trips. So either sharing with somebody else or thinking about how journeys are planned so that they are all tagged along together. Rather than lots of individual separate journeys for each individual need. So these are some of the interventions that sit within the roadmap. And I probably should have said at the beginning, the roadmap is a kind of umbrella document that brings together a lot of things that Scottish government have already committed to. And the place based investment programme to support delivery of twenty minute neighbourhoods is one of those things. There are other interventions in the roadmap, these are kind of the key investment and regulatory ones. But other interventions include further research and policy development work. And one of the, I suppose, key things that's not on this map is a commitment to look further at demand management going forward. And we currently have some research commissioned into that to look at potential options for fairly disincentivising car use as well as the interventions. In this graphic, which are largely about incentivising other alternatives. So we know that there is existing support for change. And I think as people continue to recognise the importance of, or the threat of climate change, we see that change growing over time. So people thinking that climate change is an immediate and urgent problem, that they would be willing to reduce the amount they use their car. That the government needs to support this, provide a good standard for people to be able to live without a car. And but also people starting to say that actually they would consider additional disincentives. If the revenue from those disincentives were used to subsidise better public transport. So just before I finish, I think it's really important to reflect on this idea of a just transition, which is Scottish government's commitment. That as we transition to a net zero future, it needs to be fair. But I think it's also really important to recognise that the status quo isn't currently fair. And there's a huge negative impact on those who don't currently have access to private vehicles, both in, in urban and in rural settings. And we heard before about changes in bus timetables and that, that, that can be really difficult for people who, who don't have access to a car. When so much of society has kind of been planned around people who do have that car access. And interestingly, recent research by RPPR found that in an urban setting in Glasgow, there actually was significant support. And for urgent urgent climate, the climate emergency, including by reducing car use and reallocating space to some of those other uses. And that people will be familiar with. But just to reiterate, as I said at the beginning, that absolutely this is a national target and we completely recognise that. That it won't be possible for urban and rural areas to all reduce car use to the same extent and at the same pace. And we've already seen some cities coming out with more ambitious targets to reduce car kilometres by thirty percent. Rather than the national twenty percent, which is absolutely appropriate, given there are a wider range of alternative options in those cities. So just to kind of conclude then, as I mentioned, our consultation is closed and we received a huge number of responses, which are now being analysed and be used to update the roadmap. We're currently developing a toolkit in conjunction with COSLA and Scots to support partners to implement some of these. Car use reduction interventions, recognising that whilst the roadmap is there at national level, a lot of the action needs to happen on the ground. And within that toolkit, there, there are some resources on some of the topics that have already been covered, particularly in terms of engaging communities. But also gaining that political support for change. And but we'd really welcome your support in raising further awareness on this, on thinking of how car use. And the benefits of car use reduction can really be integrated into a lot of the other work that's already going on. We've heard earlier this morning about the wide range of different policies and documents out there. And we really don't want this to be a sort of something extra for people to do. We want this to be a way of thinking in terms of how twenty minute neighbourhoods are thought about. And it's not just about that kind of, that kind of spatial planning, but also how conversations around twenty minute neighbourhoods can help people to think. Beyond that specific issue, but also about how they potentially live their lives more sustainably in other ways as well. So really happy to take any questions and to, to hear people's thoughts on any opportunities to continue working together on this.
Thank you very much, Flora. So if you have any questions for Flora, put your hand up, or if you have, I suppose, actually relevant questions, it might be suggestions. Because obviously we're looking at, Flora's in the process of developing a toolkit. It would be good to hear from an audience that is quite a wide ranging audience. So one of my first questions for them was actually around in um looking back at your individuals' decision making. And I suppose one of them was, you know, do you have to travel for this? And the I suppose the online aspect of things. And I suppose obviously there are other uh agendas thinking about and shop local love Scotland loves local agendas and how you how your messaging can balance between those two things where we're encouraging people not to buy things online and in one scenario and but in another scenario and everything in canvas being is the online good? How do people make that decision? And I don't know if you have any thinking on that.
Thanks, Ewan. And and something we we have thought quite carefully about, I think in the wording, we slightly tried to fudge it in terms of where appropriate, because it is such an individual decision. And even at a modelling level, there are so many individual factors that we play into from a carbon perspective. What is the the least carbon intensive thing to do? But I think what we're really asking people is to put some kind of conscious thought into it. And there might be things like on an online NHS appointments where people think, hey, this is more convenient for me and reduces reduces a journey. There might be other things where actually it's a, you know, it's a really heavy bulky item and, you know, would be difficult to travel, transport in the car and, you know, it might be more appropriate to to use that. We're also looking at um opportunities around last mile delivery and kind of community hubs and how actually potentially some of those deliveries could be an asset for local town centres if people are doing that last little bit of either walking, wheeling or cycling to get to a collection point and therefore doing something else in their town centre or local village shop whilst they're there, it kind of becomes a bit of a win win. So it's absolutely not a kind of blanket shop online, don't ever visit your local town centre. And that that's that sends a conflicting message anyway with our next behaviour, which is, you know, choose a more local destination. But I think it's just about getting people to kind of rethink what might be some of those ingrained behaviours and think actually is there an option that's better for them personally as well as an option that's better in terms of um emissions?
Okay, um I suppose having been in the meeting yesterday about potential um twenty twenty percent of churches Scotland's churches may be closing uh the next few years, you know, there's there's a new use for uh often centrally placed uh buildings as a collection point, um which would answer a separate uh uh question that uh uh communities are facing. And one of the questions is, when will the toolkit be available for community use? And I suppose my question is, who are you looking for the toolkit? Who is the target audience for the toolkit as well?
So we're hoping to have it ready kind of early autumn, September, October, and hoping for that to be ready in time with our our refreshed um document. The I suppose the initial audience, because the the overall roadmap was um produced in conjunction with COSLA, it was initially thinking about that local authority audience. But ob- obviously recognising that, you know, we want it to be accessible for everybody. At the moment, it's kind of a bit of a not just the kind of contents of that presentation, but includes some of those things in terms of key messages, what we know about support for this with sections on, you know, what the benefits are for business, what some of those health and wellbeing benefits are and obviously referencing things like the place standard and tools that people can actually use to engage on this at a local level. And also thinking about um some of those case studies from elsewhere that can potentially be helpful in um supporting those discussions with political leaders around this has worked elsewhere to give them the confidence to to try some things differently.
Right, okay. And the other kind of observations, questions that Ian has said highlights the need to ensure we build new structure, housing in such in the right places. So that's a whole um host of decision makers, both people who control place spatial planning, but also funders who make decisions around where certain things uh should be so key agencies, key service deliveries. And Chris Woodness has a question, um how do we progress toward a least carbon intensive community? And encourage reduction in car use, but every property plan for development includes provision for car parking. And I don't know if you have a role in in influencing what is often a maybe something with a local plan, a a council planning policy that you have to provide car parking. I don't know where where you sit within Transport Scotland on that issue.
So not directly involved in parking, but I know we are doing some additional work to look at parking. I think historically, the issue with providing parking for developments is to prevent that overspill parking onto the highway. And and so it's therefore a balance and there there there's a real need to get the balance right between that, but looking at parking and and the options around that is something that we are additionally looking at within Transport Scotland. Obviously with a view to supporting local authorities, because so much of that decision making is happens at that that local level.
Because that's that's often when um car free uh development is proposed, the people neighbouring it then just say, well, that that will affect us because people will park on our streets and it that's their that's their main fear to object to uh development where a car fee development is probably uh and it probably needs more than just you, but more of us to make a noise about and uh how we tackle that one. Pam has brought in the uh the fact that there's a petition around um buses, there's also, I think, there's a separate, she's particularly from the X thirty four to the X thirty six, that's there's also um the Edinburgh to Dumfries route, which is also um under threat. I don't know, that may have passed, but uh Pam, feel free to put a link in directly to those and if if you would like, um cargo bikes, is that something, does Transport Scotland provide any support for? I know that there's a cargo bike hire place near me. And does that, does Transport Scotland provide any support for that sort of thing?
So there are interest free loans available for the purchase of e-bikes, which include um cargo bikes either for for business or for for um transporting and families. So absolutely something that that we are keen to to push and one of the the um policies under the umbrella of the the car use reduction roadmap is a significant increase in active travel investment. And which is is kind of in the pipeline in terms of how exactly that will be allocated and the priorities around that. But that's that's looking at obviously both infrastructure, but also those additional supporting measures that need to be in place in order to help people to take up cycling, you know, things like the cycle repair scheme to encourage people to to get out bikes that they haven't had, but also things around park cycle, parking, storage. And because we know that those are are barriers as well, it's not just about being able to afford the bike, it's then and you know, depending on your housing tenure, where you then store the bike and where you store a bike for an entire entire family. So and absolutely, specifically in terms of cargo bikes, there is that um loan scheme available, but then also looking at a variety of other options around that.
Does does Transport Scotland have much data on so the our shift to um the delivery of goods being fairly significant? Is there much analysis on the um number of kilometres that that actually is currently within Scotland, that the the delivery of goods takes up all of the the total?
So I think the way it's done within Transport Scotland is it's on vehicle type rather than journey purpose. So we have data on in terms of heavy goods and light goods vehicles rather than actually the the purpose of those trips. And there is ongoing work on moment to look at that last mile and to look at different models around that last mile in terms of and you know, potentially looking at um supporting conversion of those vehicles to electric vehicles, but also looking at um other provisions such as that that hub and or or cargo and delivery. I think there's there's a there's a real interlinkage there with the the parking and the allocation of street space, particularly in town centres, because and space for deliveries and loading and unloading become a huge part of that puzzle in terms of how we allocate street space, not just away from cars, but to and people walking, cycling, walking, wheeling, cycling without and disadvantaging those local businesses as well.
Yeah, and so actually one of the questions that just comes in from Kirsty about L D Ps needing to identify allocations for infrastructures needed. Uh which we could also help funding, which is about mobility hubs, local um networks, et cetera, but also that delivery point. If we are having less cars, if we use cars less, probably use delivery more, that is that is a a piece of and space that is definitely within um our road infrastructure, which obviously in Transport Scotland uh could help to make that point. And thank you very much. And I know um Flora that you said that you would be, you're looking to spread this message as far and wide. So I suppose if any of our audience and is working with a community group or you're representing a community group and you would like to hear from Flora or her colleagues at Transport Scotland to talk about this and what this might mean in your local area. And Flora, I know you said, yeah, you have no budget for advertising and this uh which maybe is another issue that we we should be raising with Scottish government, that this is something that needs an advertising budget. And because, you know, car advertising has a massive budget and has a is a successful form of advertising. So this is something that does need uh uh greater sharing. But if you are representing a community group or you would like to share this with your colleagues and and Flora's ideas will be available, uh I think at the end of this and the information that we share. And so get in touch with uh Flora and you can uh have her share a similar presentation with your colleagues. But thank you very much, Flora. I'm now going to ask um uh John, Lucy, uh Flora stay stay here uh and uh Paul to um reveal themselves again and we'll have a bit more of a wider chat about twenty minute neighbourhood if you're if you're all still available online. Thanks very much. So thank you very much to all of you for um uh your contributions today and it covered kind of a quite a broad gamma of the issues that we see around um twenty minute neighbourhoods. I suppose one of the things I wanted to pick up on with all of you, I suppose, because it's it's been very interesting watching the development of twenty minute neighbourhood as a policy across the past few years of past, well, yes, the past years, but specifically this past year. And and Paul was interesting was in the initial survey we did with people, there was a, some people were fixated on the twenty twenty aspects of the eight hundred metres. So I think our our analysis showed that it was men that were more obsessed with the the figure of twenty minutes and or eight hundred metres. But we also became aware that people were saying, don't fixate on the twenty. And the neighbourhood bit now has become kind of changed and and Nick Wright, who presented our last event and has now produced a a report uh which he did on behalf of um was it High Trans? I can't remember who commissioned the report, but again around communities. He was sort of recommending um the become twenty minute communities to address some of the issues that and people understand communities and community is a word that is maybe more recognised in um rural Scotland and uh in urban Scotland, where neighbourhoods is a is a particularly urban context. I don't know if any of you had any reflections on on where the um agenda around twenty minute neighbourhoods is going. Feel free to pitch in.
Thanks, Ewan. Yeah, thanks for a great event. One one thing that we talked about recently is this the agenda and its need to focus on the digital shift that we've had recently. And the increase in a lot of facilities and services that people are accessing actually online. And whether we also need to think about not only physical um access to services and amenities, but digital access. And then that brings in a number of questions around um digital deprivation and literacy um variation. And I just thought that's something that I've noticed from reading a lot of the literature and speaking to people, seems to be not fully on the agenda yet in terms of a twenty minute neighbourhood. And actually, if we're forward thinking, that's something that should be there. Um especially COVID really rapidly increased our digital living. And I knew some of the surveys have showed, especially for healthcare, there's a lot of resistance to it. But actually, people who've used it, actually, there's been a quite good feedback from you know, not all services can be provided digitally. But you know, for just to check where you want to see a G P quickly, it has actually shown some quite good feedback from users.
I think that's a good point. I suppose Paul picked up on that. I think one of your suggestions around where there is not digital provision in someone's home, that giving them access to the a a physical space that does have digital provision to a service. And particularly, I think you suggested around a primary school.
Yeah, we um but there's a lot of learning to be taken from the way we responded to the the pandemic. So if you look at how we transitioned the education to online education and and how we were able to provide our school kids with with, I suppose um laptops, tablets, um or access to 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 means of communicating with with the education providers. And and now taking that learning, we're we're now looking at our final phase um in education and actually thinking, right, not every kid needs to be leaving school with hires and advanced hires and not every kid is going to use those hires to enter universities. So you know, how do we, how do we help the kids um achieve a positive outcome at the end of their education? So we're looking at actually diversifying the curriculum to create pathways into H N C, H and D qualifications, but equally recognising that are more rural locations such as um outside ban. And they're going to have to travel to Fraserburgh or worse, they're going to have to travel either into Elgin or into Aberdeen in order to to engage face to face in education. But all of these courses that they need to undertake and can be can be undertaken digitally. So it's the same same thinking, digital connectivity allows access to education, creates an opportunity and a pathway into employment. And so it it's again identifying what's the what's the essential and physical connection that's required and what's the digital connection that's required. So and we we're kind of taking that that thread through all the way from how we respond to the pandemic and how we actually provide education, learning, training opportunities and post pandemic too.
Okay, Flora, you hit your hand up.
Just to add on that, I think um there's obviously the the really obvious equity dimension in terms of who has that digital access and Scottish government's broadband rollout is is looking to improve access certainly in rural areas and to upscale people and using that. But there's also the the issue of of and people's kind of home setups and people's opportunity to use that access, particularly in terms of privacy. And we absolutely recognise that not everyone has a job where they can work from home, but some people will be in a position where they have a job where they could work from home. But they live at a um, you know, home of multiple occupancy or with with extended family. And so they don't actually have that practical opportunity to do it. And so um there's some pilots looking at um local work hubs and and that potentially also could be extended to things like you know, offering space for someone to have a confidential healthcare consultation, which they wouldn't want to necessarily do in their home um in in front of family members. So I think it's it's a really interesting opportunity and and we've think of a range of ways in which we can support it to be an equitable opportunity.
Yes, because I think the the inequity of a lot of these things and sometimes policymakers are a wee bit and ignorant of actually how some people are living. And and the pandemic, again, really highlighted things that the people's dependency on public transport uh because they were delivering um frontline services that could not be done from home. They're low paid and and working petty pathetic hours. And and that not being fully understood until you have a pandemic, which revealed and some disparities and and the opportunities uh for work uh provisions. I I would come back to my suppose my question, which I sort of raised slightly with and or referred to with um Paul and Lucy, you know, I I'd give a presentation to some students in which I look back at twenty years of um Scottish planning policy. And twenty years ago, we were describing a twenty minute neighbourhood within S B P. And you know, it existed, makes use neighbourhoods using um active travel, blah, da, da, da. All the things that we um uh uh are now described within a twenty minute neighbourhood. What will make this policy delivered in a way that we we've, I'm not saying we've been totally unsuccessful in in development in Scotland over the past twenty years. And but we've, it's been um patchy. And what will make this more successful, do you think?
Well, I've got a couple of points, but I'll defer to Paul after this. And I think one of the things we have is a real opportunity just now because of the cut through the twenty minute neighbourhood. And we don't want to lose that. I think that's our opportunity. And one of the reasons why it could be really successful and it could be a way. And because although I I said myself, I don't think it's the right term, I think it's incongruous in Aberdeenshire, it's helpful because people understand that. And although people might not identify that they live in a neighbourhood in somewhere like Cashney or wherever other rural place I can think of, they still understand what the term neighbourhood means. So I think there's that, which is helpful. And and I also think what's maybe even starting to wane already was the change in embracing that we all went through in the pandemic. I think that offered us a bit of a of a of an opportunity because an awful lot of people were forced, as you described, you and to have to try things in a different way or make things happen. And despite the 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 conditions that were put upon us and and people really started to appreciate. Some people actually just opened their eyes to their own communities for the first time. They'd lived there because they were there during the day. You know, I spoke to somebody and in my dad's men shed the other day and he went, I suddenly realised there's lots of folk in Aford and that I would have never seen because he was never there during the day. He had no idea of the mix that is actually quite a young place in Aberdeenshire terms and things. So I think that's two things that could really help. But I do wonder that the that, you know, the cap's narrowing on that.
Paul?
Ju- just to jump in, I I think the the politics in the country has changed as well. You know, local councillors in particular have seen, you know, the impact of the pandemic on their on their communities. And they've, I mean, I feel through the politics in Aberdeenshire has been changing since since I've got here. And they're certainly a a greater, you know, the politicians are willing to embrace the need for a place based approach. The the need for local living, they celebrate locality, an element of proclivity um as well. They, you know, I think we've we've seen that. And and there's an element of place branding as well. The the politicians are really quite proud of the places that we're creating in in Aberdeenshire, but certainly across the country. And I think that's the that's the emphasis. Not only is officers engaging with communities, kind of pushing forward the national policy Kind of pushing forward the national policy in the national direction, but we now have politicians firmly behind it. At a local level who are making local decisions and that affect local people. Understanding the the gravity of those decisions and equally the benefit that those decisions will bring to our communities, so I think the. That that if you like, the balance of power has certainly swung in the direction of delivery as opposed to. Stagnation, so we're sitting another twenty years' time and call it something different, but it is an effect, the same thing that we're trying to deliver. And I just noticed Joanna's comment in the in the chat, and I was going to say. Yeah, the community engagement's a big part um in terms of digital connectivity and actually understanding what sort of space they need. And I think Flora was speaking about that as well, in Aberdeenshire, we have community halls and we've we have um community campuses, as I said, both. Both primary and secondary schools that are community campuses. And one of the biggest battles in the last five years has actually been the digital connectivity, actually allowing members of the public to do book a room. And whether it be for private use or a community group, because actually being able to gain access to the council's wifi so that they can connect digitally. And but that's a battle of one, we've kind of emphasised the importance of it and kind of broken through, so. And we we kind of think we're in quite a good place in Aberdeenshire in terms of digital connectivity, albeit we're twenty six on the. And I like the league table in terms of a our our one hundred rollout. And but we're utilizing the city region deal money to this to kind of accelerate the diversity, digital connectivity in the area, so that's a bit of a. But a gap at the moment and through establishment of private networks.
Okay, thank you, thank you. As I said, I had a meeting with somebody yesterday who's done work with housing associations, and one of the housing associations they work with, they managed to get the housing association to provide. Uh wifi, not just to the common areas of the of the housing association, but to every single flat within it. And that costs, I think, one pound per person and one pound per flat. And per week for access to that, which is is cheap in terms of and connectivity provision. Uh because of the deal that the housing station was able to uh strike with a provide with B T, I think it was. And and so it's it's about thinking about those things as we deliver, as we deliver smaller scale things within a within a larger area to make sure that people do have that connectivity. I'm also feeling hopeful about twenty minute neighbourhoods, uh like, um this year, it's it's. It brings together a series of ideas that we're trying to, the planners have been trying to push for a long time. I do think we're in a different uh position than um anecdotally I sat in one local authorities. Discussion around a major fairly major planning and proposal on a master plan site and. I felt that the elected officials understood a twenty minute neighbourhood better than the planners and that to be, because they were actually much more, they were interrogatory of. This look, this looks very like every other um suburban development that we've ever seen. Has a petrol station that drives through, yes, it has an old folks, someone a bus stop, but really, is this, is this it? And and they were, they were really pushing the officials on this, and I thought that was a a good sign that the policy is being understood by the electeds. Uh members, hopefully that may uh continue. But thank you very much uh to Paul, Lucy, John and Flora for your presentations this morning, and they've all been very helpful in the continued discussion around uh twenty. And in a neighborhood, and to the wider audience, thank you very much for the comments that you've uh put in the chat box and the questions that you've um asked um our speakers. And I'm sorry, I apologize if I've missed any, and some of you have had very good questions, they will no doubt come up again at future meetings. And one of the things I would say to everyone that is um still online just now is. If you have um suggestions or if you're actually involved in a grassroots project that is looking at twenty million, we're really interested to hear about that. In our, we are scoping for speakers, um we, it's gone from not, it's it's gone from us having to look for speakers. To actually a lot of people actually coming to say, we are either doing work or we can recommend somebody that's doing work. Uh so we're very happy to have recommendations made to us, so get in touch with us if there's. An area of twenty million that you're working on that you think it would be good to to have presented. And and there'll be a questionnaire going out, a survey going out after this with the recording, a link to the recording and the presentations that will be available. And please, please complete the survey to let us know how we've done today and and have any recommendations within that survey as well, because. It's not just for us, but it's also for us to be able to feed back to to the Scottish government as the twenty minute neighbourhood continues to develop, it's important for them to hear actually what happens. Uh in practice, but thank you very much for your time this morning and it was lovely to see you all. Enjoy the rest of your day.